Did Joey call you?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 19th, 2019. We have three study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the outside agency committee recommendations. Item number two is the Colorado Communities for Climate Action membership. And item number three is H R seven sixty-three, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019. We'd like to start our meeting tonight, as we do on most nights, inviting the public to speak on any of the items that are on the agenda. And did we have a sign up? We may have had some people sign up to speak, and we'd like to start with those individuals. Thank you. So our first speaker signed up to speak is Rob Robinson. Rob, if you'd like to come to the podium, and if you'd give us your first name and last name, and spell your last name, and give us your address, we've allocated three minutes per speaker.
My name is Rob Robinson. I live at Four Hillside Drive. I'm also a member of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee. Greetings. Good evening. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Three. It's a bill in Congress, H R twenty-three oh seven, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. You may recall that last year, a group of five residents in Wheat Ridge came and spoke on the act last year. And this year, we've got Caleb Betzold from the city staff is going to recommend a City Council resolution supporting the act. In addition, she will be recommending that Wheat Ridge join the Colorado Communities for Climate Action Group. We have a representative here. Their members are thirty-nine Colorado cities and counties. And most importantly, one of their policy principles calls for a market-based approach to reduce greenhouse gases. H R twenty-three oh seven also is a market-based approach to dealing with the problem. Most importantly, is expected to drive removal of forty percent of the greenhouse gases. Wheat Ridge is at risk from extreme weather events spawned by climate warming. Most likely is a wildfire in western Jefferson County. That area is the highest-risk community in the country, according to B-Risk Analytics, a company that does risk assessments for insurers. If a catastrophe occurs there, Wheat Ridge will be obligated to help with disaster relief. And some of our residents may be required, may have to flee the city of Wheat Ridge because of the toxic smoke that might be generated. In the last Wheat Ridge resident survey, about seventy percent of Wheat Ridge residents' respondents considered environmental sustainability a very important issue. A City Council resolution calling for passage of the act will scale up those voices with our state and federal elected officials, and also with our neighboring communities. Congressman Ed Perlmutter is a co-sponsor of the act, but it may give the act more attention and perhaps become an active champion of its passage. Compared to the three hundred-plus bills that were in Congress last year that related to the climate crisis, this act that we're going to hear about today is only around forty pages, a very simple act. It will be efficient and is expected to reduce greenhouse gases by a whopping forty percent on its own. And it is supported by many notable scientists, economists, and policy leaders. I urge, I strongly urge, the City Council to scale up the impact of the many individual voices in Wheat Ridge with a resolution that calls for action on the climate issues and supporting passage of the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act.
Thank you. That's the only speaker I have signed up to speak tonight. If there's anyone in the hall who is not signed to speak but would like to speak on any of the issues on our agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Okay, and I don't see anyone coming forward to speak, so we'll close our citizens' right to speak, and we will move to Agenda Item Number One. This is the outside agency committee recommendations. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant to the City Manager, who's our staff lead on this program, and staff for support for the committee will give a summary or shall introduce our speakers this evening.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. And tonight, we have two of our committee members, Lisa Rucker and Jerry DeTulio. Tonight, they're going to give their recommendations for the outside agency program, and then they'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Jerry DeTulio, District One.
Hi there, I'm Lisa Rucker. And I want to thank everyone, mayor, council members, city staff, and residents for this opportunity to present the Outside Agency Program Review Committee's recommendations for 2022. I'd like to recognize my fellow committee members that dedicated their time to this process and provided valuable insight and feedback. Kathy Milkie, Sheila Redd, Genevieve Wooden, Laura McGary, and Carol Matthews. I'd also like to thank Mary Ann for her excellent guidance. The committee reviewed applications from twenty-five nonprofits that serve Wheat Ridge residents. We also had the opportunity to learn more about the organizations via brief Zoom presentations and Q and A sessions. The recommendations being presented today are based on the committee's evaluation of each application and presentation and guidance with the following criteria. Has the organization properly identified the community need? The estimated number of Wheat Ridge residents served in a year? How the programs benefit the quality of life for Wheat Ridge residents? How the programs benefit the health, safety, and welfare of Wheat Ridge residents? And does the program have strong performance measurements? During this process, the committee also learned how the pandemic has affected each organization this past year and how they adapted to meet their respective missions. We also learned how the nonprofits will thrive in serving the community in 2022. The committee is recommending a total of one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to twenty-five organizations for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. The only suggestion I had for the committee, I wanted to thank Mary Ann for her work. It was a little difficult the last two years on Zoom, but I think hopefully going forward we'll be in person. Two recommendations I had was, one was that the dollar amount may need to be raised from one hundred and thirty-three thousand to maybe one hundred and fifty thousand for next year, actually, 2023. And then also, what we're seeing is a lot of organizations applying, and then those organizations within the applications are applying to those organizations for money. So I think you might want to look at updating the application process where Committee A asks for money, and then Committees B and C are also asking the city for money, plus they're going to that Committee A for money. So maybe ask a few more questions about, will you be receiving any funds from any other Wheat Ridge organizations? For example, and this is not a, I support all the programs, but for example, the Farmers Five Thousand, they fund a bunch of school programs with an application process in the school, but then you have Farmers, Wheat Ridge Farmers groups applying for money also. So they could get money from the city, and then they may get money from Farmers Five Thousand. So you might want to just add additional questions about that. But other than that, I think it was a good process. I don't see any changes. I think the committee structure is good, the staff structure is good, and we're available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank the council for the Trig grant program that you discussed Monday, that's Monday night. Good job on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the report. Questions from council? Ms. Doosman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just looking at the summary, it looks like the Jefferson Center for Mental Health only asked for nine thousand five hundred, but they were awarded ten thousand six hundred. Could you just kind of let us know as to how you came to that number?
Sure. So what happens is every night when we interview the applicants, we have a spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet shows how much money each group is asking for. And then as a board member, you can assign more or less money to that group. It doesn't have to be exactly what they want. It could be a thousand dollars more or a thousand dollars less. And so what that shows is that the group in general, the committee, weighted heavily on Jefferson Center for Mental Health dollars. And I was one of them, because mental health right now is an issue in the schools and in the public. So they asked for, what was it, nine thousand? I probably did, I probably did six, more than that. And then the average of all the committee members ends up being that number.
So there was actually two organizations that we recommended above. They're asking them out, that being one of them. They're doing a heavy lift at Coler站 elementary, and they're serving about one hundred thirty-eight kiddos there through mental health services, which is sixty-nine percent of that school population. And I think nationally, I mean, it's anticipated that kids are really hit by this pandemic around their mental health services. So Coler站 doesn't have the budget to pay the full amount to have those services in the school, and the organization's fundraising the balance.
So I guess you touched on my second question as to the CASA of Jefferson and Gilpin Counties as well?
Yeah, CASA is, would like to increase the number of kiddos served from ninety to one hundred. And while the calls went down during the pandemic in relation to domestic violence against children, the kids are now going to be, I think the folks that report incidences of child abuse are going to be more present in those kids' lives, so they expect that number to go up potentially. And so their hope is to meet at least fifty percent or more of kids that need court-appointed special advocates.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank the committee. I know it's a lot of work. Having presented a couple times to you guys, I know that those are epic evenings, like back-to-back presentations. So thank you for your service. I also just want to recognize, I really appreciate the criteria that you shared. It seemed really sensitive to how our dollars should be allocated, and especially in this, you know, post-2020 year that we have. So I appreciate that sensitivity. I do have two questions. One is, and maybe this is more for Patrick. You know, I think that this would actually be a really great committee to be on, because you'd probably learn more about who Wheat Ridge is than any other committee. And what do we do as a city to recognize or acknowledge our community partners like this that we are funding, other than publish this in minutes? Do we have a, somewhere in our website where we acknowledge who we're funding community partnerships?
Mary Ann, do we, I think it goes, do you know, do we publicize this anywhere else? I mean, it's in the budget, it'll be in the budget book, of course, which is a public document.
We know a lot of people read that.
I'm sure everybody reads that, right? And, which is on the city's website also, but we could do a separate, special page on the website?
Yeah, I think.
Or maybe in the connections, maybe the mayor's newsletter, and get the information out.
Yeah, let's do, let's do both and make sure we're linking to these agencies, because they're doing incredibly important work. And I think sometimes they're invisible to a lot of our community. They may know a couple of them, but I think to see them as a whole, I think is really valuable.
Mary Ann, did you have something to add to that? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that we do have it on the city webpage. Once it's, once the city budget is adopted, then we post it. But there are, like Patrick said, a lot of really great opportunities for us to share the information in connections, mayor's matters. We could definitely spread the word.
Wonderful. So I would certainly approve any incremental increases to this, knowing that it's actually, you guys are evaluating it, so it is impacting our community. And I just want to specifically call out, I was really glad to see Robbie's Hope this year. My son last year really good friend of suicide, and their actions and activities, they immediately stepped into the whole circle of families that were impacted by it. And I will say, we have conversations in our household at least every, every couple weeks that are from the materials they gave us to work on mental health. So I just want to call them out as doing great service in our community, that my family benefited from this year. So good work, and thank you.
Mr. DeTulio.
I wanted to agree with Rachel and Leah, because the committee members' ability to donate more on their spreadsheet or less really helps those types of groups, like Robbie's Hope and the mental health. And that's where I, I can tell you right now, as one member of the committee, I weighed heavily on mental health and any youth-type programs, especially suicide prevention. So I think that flexibility for the committee is good, and I think that that should stay as you move forward. And look at the advertising would be awesome, because I think there was like four new groups that came on, four or five new groups, but you could see a lot more if you had this advertised that it's coming up for people to actually start applying for nonprofits and everything.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to thank the committee as well, really nice work, and echo the sentiments of Ms. Hulteen that I would support incremental increases, but also just the descriptions as they're presented even here. I think a lot of us, you know, if you're not involved with you things, it's just neat to see the full description as is presented here that might be nice as well.
Thank you. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I absolutely agree with what Ms. Weaver just said and what Ms. Hulteen said, that if we could get this, even just these descriptions along with hyperlinks to their websites on our, on our website would be helpful, I think, for these, for these groups. And thank you to the committee. I think you guys did an excellent job, and I agree, the criteria that you guys use makes a lot of sense, and I think helps going forward. I don't have any questions about this current year. I do have a que, you said, Treasure DeTulio, you thought one hundred and fifty thousand next year might make sense?
That would be for 2023.
Twenty twenty-three.
Right. I'm just looking at, you're going to have more groups applying if you really broadcast this, and like I said, if you really want to focus on mental health, suicide prevention, and youth programs, you'll see that, those numbers come in. And I think going from one hundred and thirty-three to one hundred and fifty thousand might be, I mean, that's just, I'm pulling that number out of the air, but I think that would help the city promote these. I mean, this is a unique program for the city of Wheat Ridge, that I can tell. It's really, it's really well-supported by the community, and I think it's a feather in the city's hat to have this, and we are all-American city now, so we want to make sure that we show that we are.
So I guess my next question would be for Patrick, moving forward for 2023. We're talking about, what, seventeen thousand if we went to one hundred and fifty, but the requests for two years ago were one hundred and seventy-one thousand, so I don't know what increment would make sense if we went up twenty thousand or fifty, or do you know what our?
Yeah, it's really up to City Council. I mean, I think staff would definitely support an increase, too. I think we just, we've kept it, the committees have kept it kind of the way it was or the previous year's allocations, but they always had the, I think, the discretion to recommend higher if they wanted to. So we could, next year's process, we could tell them, City Council said your minimums or the new level is one fifty, or whatever City Council would like to do, and we can make that part of the process. So if you want to do some consensus tonight, we can, we can add that to the process.
Do we want to try a consensus on a number, or do we want to keep going?
I'm always up for trying for a consensus.
Can we go for a consensus? I feel like an auctioneer.
Can we have a consensus to go on a consensus?
Can we get a consensus to go on a consensus for 2023 at one sixty?
Okay, we have consensus on that. Do we have any further discussion on this year's list? Do we have consensus to move that forward in the budgeting process as presented? And we do? Okay. Are you looking for any further direction on that, or does that get you where you need to be?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming to see us tonight. We appreciate the presentation.
Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Number Two. This is a discussion on the Colorado Communities for Climate Action. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Caleb Betzold, our now-full-time sustainability coordinator is, will present this evening.
I will actually be introducing our speaker in just a minute here, but I did want to provide Mr. Mayor and council a little bit of background on this topic first. So as you may remember, at the February first council meeting, Sustainable Wheat Ridge members and I presented you with an update on the Sustainability Action Plan. So the plan is now over fifty percent complete, and the majority of the remaining goals are policy-related. Staff then outlined also at this meeting potential sustainability strategies, and one of these strategies was supporting environmental policy on a regional, state, and federal level. Colorado Communities for Climate Action, or as you will hear tonight, C C four C A, was outlined as a policy group that could facilitate the adoption of this proposed strategy. Tonight, Jacob Smith, Executive Director of C C four C A, is here to present to council on the membership benefits of joining the coalition in 2022. As a reminder, if council would like to move forward with this, there is a five thousand dollar annual financial component determined by Wheat Ridge population size, and council would also need to pass a resolution by the end of 2021 in support of the current C C four C A policy statement. So that being said, I will now turn it over to Jacob Smith, who will be giving the presentation tonight, and he will also be available for any questions you may have after the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for having me. See if I can manage to navigate this without screwing it up too much. My name's Jacob Smith, and as you know, I run Colorado Communities for Climate Action, and I'm thrilled to be here. I used to be the mayor in Golden, got to know Patrick during that time, got to know lots of folks in Wheat Ridge during that time. Very happy to get to continue to work in Jefco and across the state with local governments doing the work that we're doing. So I'll just walk through. Which button do I need? That'll work, thank you. All right, well, so C C four C A, you've got some material in your packet, so you may be covering things you already know, and please stop me at any point if you have questions, and I'm happy to take questions at the end as well. C C four C A is most fundamentally an advocacy organization. Our focus is strengthening climate policy at the state and federal level. And it's unusual as an organization in that it is purpose-built. It was created to do exactly this thing. So it's sort of like a C M L in the sense that it is, it's a coalition of, or an association of local governments, but it is, it exists for this one single purpose. And that means that we spend virtually all of our time figuring out how to leverage the voices of local elected officials and local governments in these policy venues. The legislature is the, I think, that's the place where we started the most, and we still do a lot of work there. We just wrapped up a session, as you all probably know, where we got, collectively got a ton of work done on climate. So that ends up being a major focus of the work. But in the last couple of years, we've also started to do a lot more on the regulatory side. So we spent a lot of time working at the Air Quality Control Commission, the P U C, other entities like that that are really implementing a lot of the statutes that the legislature passes. So it ends up having, the decisions they make end up being immensely consequential as well. And we do a lot of work with the state agencies that are associated with those rulemaking bodies like C dot and C D P H E. And increasingly, this year, we've always had federal as part of the mission, but it's been, it's not been a venue where you could do a lot on climate. That's changed this year. It's still limited, but there are opportunities for Colorado's congressional delegation, those individuals, to be influential votes or influential voices at key moments. And so we've started to do more at the federal level as well. And then we do, that's the core of what we do, is advocacy work, but then we also do things that are designed to just be supportive of our members, help build capacity among our members, help all of you be more effective as advocates for climate change to whatever extent you want to do that. And then we also spend a lot of time just keeping folks updated to whatever extent you want to be updated on things like emerging science and communications, how to communicate effectively about, about climate, what the latest research is on public opinion and so on. Nope, there we go. Okay, members, thirty-eight members now. And the thing I want to highlight here is, you certainly see jurisdictions that you would expect to see on this list, like Boulder, Boulder County, Pittkin, Aspen, and so on. But in the last several years, we've grown quite a bit with what I would, I think of as purple communities, communities that were not historically viewed as cutting-edge on climate or environmental issues at all, really. And I think that's reflective of the shift in politics across the, across the country, but also the state, particularly with local governments that are beginning to appreciate the impacts of climate change at the local level, real impacts that are occurring in local communities that city councils and county commissioners have to deal with in ways that maybe weren't as obvious before. And I think that's, the result then is a bunch of communities like Northland, Westminster, Avon, Broome Field, where the historically really purple communities and the politics have shifted, not necessarily partisan, in a partisan sense, but definitely on a climate sense, an interest in taking on climate change. I assume you all have a pretty good sense of impacts of climate change. I won't spend much time here. I will just underscore the degree to which climate change is impacting local governments has not been a central part of most of the conversations, which is part of why C C four C A exists. So when there is a fire upstream from Wheat Ridge and you end up with debris flows or mudslides, or even just a bunch of erosion, which predictably happens after fires, we've seen in Glenway Canyon now, the downstream communities have to deal with the water treatment costs. Nobody, nobody comes to your rescue to help you deal with these massive sediment loads and other pollutants. Those are impacts to local communities. They've always existed, but climate change is clearly amplifying the frequency and intensity of those fires, and that means communities like yours, like lots of communities across the state, end up with real costs. Any community in the mountains that is experiencing warmer winters is also experiencing more intense or more frequent freeze thaw, which means their roads are degrading at a much quicker rate than they had been or had been budgeted for, or had been constructed for. So those are local roads, those are county roads, local governments are picking up those costs because they have to. So there's a, all of the impacts that we think about and are often discussed at the global or national or continental scale, they end up mattering at the local level, too, and that's the reason we exist, to be able to make sure that state legislators and other policymakers make those connections when they're making really key policy decisions. The legislative session this year was, 2019 was a huge session for climate. It was, I think, transformative in terms of the electric grid, in terms of how we manage energy and carbon pollution across the state. And I don't think anybody expected to have another year like that anytime soon, and 2021 was another, another year like that. C C four C A, you get a sense of how we engage at the legis, in the legislative arena from this. A lot of bills, we have some sense of which bills we really want to focus on and which ones are less important, and then we put a lot of energy, of course, to those higher ones are less important, and then we put a lot of energy, of course, to those higher engagement bills. Lots of our elected officials will testify, we spend a lot of time lobbying, lots of letters to the editor, and other ways that we're leveraging, really, you all as elected officials and the voice of these local governments to influence committee votes or floor votes or decisions by leadership at the legislature. I won't go through this because it's a lot, but if, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have, and I, if you don't have the slide deck, I'm happy to share that with you as well, to give you some sense of some of what happened in this session. Huge legislation signed on the electric grid, for example. Huge investments in transmission. Colorado will now begin the process of either joining or creating a regional transmission organization, which means when our grid in Colorado is trying to find wind or solar intermittent sources, we'll be drawing from an area that might be two or three or four or five times the size geographically of Colorado's grid. So the ability to balance the load across the entire grid is suddenly much easier because the sun is shining somewhere and the wind is blowing somewhere, so as that scale gets bigger, it makes the ability to shift dramatically toward renewable energy sources a whole lot easier and it makes the grid a lot more stable and reliable as a result. So that's an example of very transformative. It will take some years before all this happens, but all of these wheels in motion. Huge transportation funding bill, which you probably know about, big chunk of that is going to electrification, big chunk of that's going to multimodal, and now CDOT, in, as they update the ten-year plan, is going to, going to begin to use greenhouse gas emissions as part of how they evaluate projects, which they've never done before. The plastics bill, the local preemption on, or the preemption on local governments making their own decisions about limitations on single-use plastics, that's now gone. There's a timeframe to it, it kicks in, doesn't kick in quite yet, but that's another example of a pretty transformative piece of legislation. So collectively, a whole lot happened in this session that will make a huge difference for your ability as a local government to make your own decisions and then to, to access the levers at the state level that help you all reduce carbon pollution. And then the regulatory side, again, I won't go through all these, although I'm happy to answer any questions, but just to give you a sense, over the last year, these are what I would describe as our biggest regulatory victories, and again, they're really consequential. A bunch of coal plants that had been, the utilities and owners had committed retirement dates, but there wasn't anything requiring them to follow through on that. One of the rulemaking's we got through over this past year locks in those dates, which is immensely consequential. The Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, you all don't have a lot of drilling, I'm assuming, in Wheat Ridge, but methane emissions from drilling operations are a major source of greenhouse gas pollution, and that clearly does affect you for all the reasons climate changes affect you. And the COGCC now has a profoundly different mission. Their mission used to be basically support the oil and gas industry, and their mission now is a normal regulatory mission, regulate the industry to make sure that as they do the activities that they do, they're not causing undue harm to the communities that they operate in. So just these huge shifts in the way that Colorado does energy policy and climate policy, both at that high level, at the state level, in terms of the legislation, but also then how all of those bills and all of those policies are implemented across those agencies. Every member, right now thirty-eight of the coalition, has the same voice, doesn't matter how large or small you are. As you heard, the population sizes, the dues are based on population size, but it doesn't have any impact on your, your influence at the table. Every jurisdiction has an equal voice and equal vote. I have an org chart I'll show you. It's not that complicated, but it's a few slides, a few more slides in, but basically as a board of directors, every jurisdiction, every member has a seat on that board, and you can apply, you can appoint alternates, and we are very accommodating of whatever makes the most sense to you as far as elected officials versus staff, or whatever, it's really whatever works best for you all, we make that work on our end. And then there are a few committees. One focuses on the advocacy, another is the, like, basically a finance committee, we call it planning and budget. There's a legislative committee that, that works pretty hard during the session and takes a long break outside of the session, and those are things that you all can engage in to whatever extent you want. Some of our members are highly engaged, they have representatives on every committee, they testify all the time, they write letters to the editor in op-eds, and call their legislators often, and other members are aligned, which is why they are a member, but don't have any bandwidth. It tends to be the really small communities, but it's, it's a mix, and so it's really whatever level of engagement you all wanted to, to participate in, we can accommodate that, and you will find that, whatever level you're at, you will find other members at the same level. The policy statement is the governing policy document, so, and that's the document that you would need to pass a resolution expressing support for. It's basically a list of policy positions, and this is an unusual thing about CC4CA, any changes to that document require unanimity. So every member has to say they're okay with this, or at least they, they don't object to a change, for that change to happen. And that, if you had pitched me on becoming the executive director of an organization with a thirty-eight-member board, where changes to the policies required unanimous consent of every member, I might have laughed at you, but it actually works stunningly well. The, partly because you have to pass that resolution in the first place. So anybody that joins is already aligned with the bulk of, and at a high level with everything of the positions that we've taken, and so they're now part of this conversation about do we want to make some adjustments and changes? The policy statement is fairly baked now, so as we go through the annual process of updating it, it's really small, at this point, it's really small things. Typically, it's things that are implied already, but there's enough activity happening that it makes sense to call out some very specific language. A good example would be carbon capture. There's general language in the policy statement about reducing greenhouse gas emissions related to carbon pollution in a bunch of places. Carbon capture is beginning to get a lot more attention, a lot of federal money, some state money, and so it's going to, it's just going to take on probably more policy importance. So now we have language that we've added that specifically addresses carbon capture, and it says the thing you would expect it to say. We make sure if you're doing carbon capture, it's, it's very attentive to the carbon pollution, and it's designed to accelerate the transition to clean energy and not, not do the opposite. So the things that, the changes we make tend to be pretty obvious and intuitive, but they still all require every member to sign off on that, and that includes the smallest member to the largest member. And I think that's everything here. I'm, I'm happy to talk more about that. This is the org chart, very simple. The two main committees, planning and budget, which is basically a finance committee, and then the policy committee, which oversees all the program work. The ledge group is a subcommittee, basically, of the policy committee, and then we create these ad-hocs as needed. Often, there'll be policy issues that have a lot of technical dimensions to them, and on the CC4CA staff, we may not be the experts, but there is expertise out across the membership, or even sometimes not across the membership, but with allied groups, and we'll pull together ad hoc that has a fixed period of time and spend some time digging into that issue and then coming back with recommendations. And that has worked extremely well, both at giving people that might not otherwise plug in because they don't have the time to be on the board or play a sustained regular role over a long period of time, but they have some expertise and are happy to participate for three months in a working group that helps define positions on something specific. So that has worked really well from an engagement standpoint, as well as from actually helping us figure out policy issues that we need to figure out. The, I think the single most important reason our members join is because they want agency as a local government on climate policy that affects them. I think the normal path is communities that develop their own climate goals or sustainability goals, and they do things locally, and you can do a lot locally, but you, every local government that starts to do a lot of work on climate runs into these barriers. These ceilings are policy barriers that limit how much you can do to reduce carbon pollution in your own community, and those levers are at the state and, to some extent, the federal level. So the jurisdictions that join, I think, all of them join because they want to have a voice, whether they're actively using their own voice or they just want to be part of a collective voice, they want their voice to matter in these venues. At the state legislature, nobody cares, I'm in Golden, nobody cares what Golden thinks at the state legislature, except for our state rep and our state senator, true for Wheat Ridge also. And having thirty-eight jurisdictions, or however many it is, speak with one voice changes that dynamic immensely, because there is always somebody on every committee that is, that is represented by, or is representing at least one, if not more, of our members. And certainly in the regulatory environment and working with the governor and his cabinet and those agencies, there's just a, the collective voice ends up having much more impact than any individual jurisdiction can have alone. And that really was the genesis of the coalition. We can't, I mean, it was basically Boulder and those guys saying, we are trying to do big things, and nobody cares about what Boulder thinks anyway, and we're one jurisdiction, so let's pull together a bunch of communities across the state that share the same values and views and policy goals and find ways to leverage that, which is what we've done. I think there are other values or other benefits that jurisdictions get, things like access to the training and workshops I mentioned before, the information, a lot of our members, I'm sure that not all of our members read all of our email updates, they're pretty lengthy and detailed, they have a lot of information about what's happening at the state legislature and elsewhere, but a fair number of folks regularly point out how grateful they are that they get these things. So at least some of those folks are reading these things in detail, and anybody who wants to stay very on top of what's happening in the regulatory arena, for example, in Colorado on climate and energy, they can do that by reading the things that we put out. So I think a lot of members get extra value out of that, and I think there's also just a, like a rapport and relationship value. One of the things that people do seem to say a lot, probably less so over the last year and a half, but even during the pandemic, people would say that the relationships and the peer learning and the ability to reach out to other jurisdictions that might have similar challenges or similar goals and share information. So it's kind of like a CML again, it's just, it's focused on this issue that for our members is a really important issue. That's the reason they're members, and it makes it, they get access to these relationships with other jurisdictions that theoretically they could develop otherwise, but this is like ready-made. And, and it's just a bunch of, I mean, honestly, it's a bunch of really smart, committed people, electeds and staff alike, that are trying to do good things across the state, and for a lot of folks, I think that is a real value. And I will stop there, but to say, we would love to have Wheat Ridge join as a member, part of CC4CA, if you all decide it's a good fit. It doesn't help us to have jurisdictions joining that are not a good fit, the way we operate really does depend on everybody being at least aligned at a basic level with our policy statement and the, the goals of reducing carbon pollution across the state. But if it seems like a good fit to you, we would love, it'd be great. Wheat Ridge is, you guys have done amazing work here locally, and it feels, as an outsider to me, that you're running into that same kind of problem, that there are policy challenges that you can do so much locally, but if you want to go further than that, you have to, we have to make change at the, at the state and federal level, and CC4CA is at least a big vehicle for doing that. So I will stop there, happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, we'll open it up. Ms. Nosler back.
Thanks, Jacob, so much. I, I think that you're exactly right when it comes to municipalities needing to advocate for some of the, the things that we need in order to make an impact on climate, specifically as it relates to EV infrastructure and how we're going to actually power the cars we're talking about putting on the road. It's important that the, the local municipalities are part of that conversation. I, I think it's helpful for you to explain this, that it works like CML. My, my biggest concern is in Wheat Ridge, we don't have the same issues as Adams County as it pertains to drilling and extraction. In terms of members, how, how does this work? Do, do, do we end up getting caught up in what is going on in, in Broomfield and Longmont if we join, or are we talking about those higher-level policy issues?
I appreciate the question. It's a really good question, and it's very much the latter. We are very clear that we don't engage locally. Our job is to amplify the voices and the political footprint of our members at the state and federal level. So we don't, we don't lobby our individual members to do things, specific things, or do things differently at the local level. We don't try and get some of our local members to help other local members with their own local issues like you're talking about. So there's a very clear line, our job is state and federal policy, not local policy. So that's part of my answer. And then it also, it is very much the case that not every member cares equally about all of the issues we work on. The priority setting is very much that, that it, that is a collective process, and we figure out priorities that make sense for everybody. But we also, because it requires unanimous support to take a position, we also don't take positions where there are actual differences of opinion among our members, and a really good example is on extraction. We have some members that have drilling and don't oppose drilling, they want to regulate it better, but they don't oppose it, and we have other members that would just assume ban it across the state. We don't have a position on siting buffer zone setbacks or other, other specific issues around whether drilling should happen, and that's just because we don't have unanimity, so we can't take a position. We have a very clear position, and we've actually accomplished, I think, quite a bit on pollution from drilling that does happen, because everybody, all of our members share the view that we should have as little or none carbon pollution from drilling activities. Methane's the big culprit, but there's other, there's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff that happens when drilling occurs or can happen, it happens a lot, and we put a lot of effort into the regulations that tighten, improve monitoring and tighten up the requirement to fix leaks when they, when they happen and all of those kinds of things. So we don't, I don't think, if you were to talk to any of our members, I certainly encourage you to do that, you would find any, I don't think you'd find anyone describing that problem that you're concerned about or that you flag, just because I don't think it really happens, but, but we, one of the consequences is when there are issues, that there's a disagreement, we just, we figure out how to coordinate off and we don't engage. Water's another great one. We have a position, we should find ways, we should reduce carbon pollution tied to water treatment and water, all of the, all of the pieces that go into the water system, but we have a whole bunch of West Loop members and Front Range members that have very different views on storage and diversions, and so we don't have, we don't have, a climate organization could have a position on those things, that'd be a reasonable thing, but we don't because of the kind of, because of the nature of the organization. So hopefully that, that'll, I've never seen the problem you're flagging, and I don't think the things we have in place avoid that. But please do talk to other members. I encourage you all, talk to other jurisdictions that are members if you wish, and hear their version, like their experience of, of the coalition. That was a long answer.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doosman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. So the CC4CA was founded in June of 2020, is that correct? Or was that just when your policy statement was adopted?
Oh, no, the, the policy statement, we update that every year, so that's, I think, what you're looking at. No, we, we started, came into existence, I think, in May of 2015. I came on board about three and a half years ago, so I wasn't around at the beginning, and it was an original group of nine jurisdictions, and then every year since then, you've just been growing, so we're at, whatever that comes out to, six years-ish.
Okay, and can you maybe talk about just like the, the membership as far as like how representatives are chosen, whether you meet annually?
Sure.
And, and kind of like you, you alluded to it being like CML, so I kind of just want to know what that process is.
Yeah, you bet, and I'll try and make it a more concise answer than my last one. The, every member, every jurisdiction has a seat on the board, like I mentioned that, and you guys can decide how, it's totally up to you. You all decide how you want to do that. You also can have seats on all of the other committees, and that's entirely discretionary, and again, you guys can decide how you want to do that. Some of our jurisdictions, it's all elected, some are, it's all staff, some are a mix, it's really up to you. We have a few jurisdictions, actually, that have appointed members of their citizen advisory board. They're typically really small jurisdictions, and they're very constrained on, on capacity, and they have a really active climate board or sustainability board, and from our perspective, it doesn't matter so long as whoever you appoint to represent you on each of these boards is empowered to act under your path. So they have to be able to participate in the decisions that that committee is making, representing the member, but beyond that, it doesn't matter, we're very open, it's entirely up to you how you do that. So we will work with whatever you need to make that work, and we are happy to have as many of you engage as you all want, and if you don't have the bandwidth, we'll.
So just a follow-up as far as that goes, how, do you vote on the policies that you are going to support or oppose?
Yeah, and so that's where the unanimous consent piece comes in. We, on changes to the policy statement itself, which is sort of a policy, like it's, it's the policy bible in a sense, like it is the document that governs all the decisions we take or we can take, that does require every member to agree. So the policy statement does not change, once you become a member, it does not change until and unless every member agrees to the change. And we go through a process every year where we surface ideas, figure out are there, are there things that we didn't cover that we should have, or where it's a wording that was more confusing than it could have been, or things like that, and we have a long, four-ish month process where all those things get surfaced and vetted, and then we come up with the proposed updates, and that goes out to the members. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy and somewhat tedious process, but that's the, the trade-off is then everybody who joins knows they're not going to be stuck, like that's, that's the downside of the CML. Like that's, that's the downside of the CML is you end up, you're a member of CML, but they're taking positions that you all disagree with and that's the nature of, of voting organizations. So on the policy positions and then on very specific implementations like a position on the bill, any member can block any decision like that. On the things that are more about running organization, the more organizational administration, administrative decisions, those kinds of things, those are, those are just a normal majority vote. But we tend to, I can't think of a time where we, I'm sure we've had votes, it's almost always been consensus because of just the culture of the organization.
And so in your foundation or your basis, would you say that you advocate for more local control? Or how would you say like you're, you're framed in that?
Yeah, that's a good question. In general, I, I would say CC4CA is not evangelical about local control the way CML is. Like that's sort of, they're organized around that idea of local control. So CC4CA is not local control no matter what. The goal really is how do we reduce carbon pollution? So there are times when CC4CA, CC4CA has taken positions in support of, so that bill I mentioned on plastics that eliminated the preemption of limitation of local governments, it also has statewide bans on two specific kinds of seemingly used plastics, styrofoam and seemingly used plastic bags that take effect in a few years. And that is toward that odd, with the notion of strict local control and everything. But our member, our 38 members are comfortable with that because that math for them is these bags are a huge problem. Yeah, we prefer local control, I think we equally prefer local control, but some issues, carbon pollution and climate and energy, we just can't tackle, we're not going to tackle sufficiently without state-level policies. So our 38 members all supported positions that allowed for these statewide bans. So it's not, I say we lean that way pretty heavily, but it doesn't always play out that way. There are issues where the members feel like, yeah, this is worthwhile leaving us a local control because we're going to amend it if I have this dramatic reduction in carbon pollution across the state.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see on here there's four membership tiers, the base, base plus, care and care plus. What's the difference?
There is no difference. Believe it or not, we have a bunch of members that want to pay more than they have to. And we, it was at Hock for a long time. We had members who just, they wanted to pay more, so they come up with a number and it just, was just easier to create tiers. It's mostly jurisdictions that are, that have constituencies that are very aggressive on climate and they want to see their elected officials being as aggressive on climate as possible. Those are the ones that tend to do a higher tier just because they, they want to show their constituents that they really are taking it seriously and they're going to invest more than they have to be part of it. So totally discretionary. I don't think anybody joins anything other than the base level. And then we never, well, once a year, when it's coming up with time, I'll mention everybody. And if you're able and willing to, to up your tier, that's great, but it's no requirement, no expectation, totally discretionary. It doesn't have any effect on your, your voting power or benefits as a member.
My other question was, looking at the list of members, I don't see Arvada, Lakewood or Jefferson County on here. Is there a reason, any particular reason or?
I don't, for each individual jurisdiction, I think it's probably some version of what the local politics are there. I think Jeffco is probably of those three, the most likely to join in the not-too-distant future. I can't say that they will for sure, but they're, they're at least, like they're engaged in thinking about it. But I think, my understanding, I don't know the local politics very well, and we're in Arvada today, but my understanding is they just don't have the ability, concept that would want to join the pollution process. I don't, if there's other reasons, I don't know what they are. But that's typically, if there's a jurisdiction that you think might be inclined but isn't, it's typically that their politics just aren't there to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jacob, for the presentation and for all the work you're doing. I have a couple of questions. I think probably the easiest is, so you've mentioned that the policy statement gets updated annually and I'm sure that is quite a process. I see here that this is a June 19th, 2020. When are you anticipating in 2021 updating it?
Yeah, and we, so I apologize because we started the conversation back in February and I didn't think to make sure you had. So we just, we are kind of in the process. We have, oh, and you asked about, think about meetings too. So we, the meetings are, they're all virtual, have always been virtual, or at least a virtual, virtual with an in-person option. During the pandemic, they've all been virtual with this one exception of the annual retreat, which I mentioned because that's where we do the policy statement update. So the, the policy statement update process is the policy committee and other conversations doing the vetting and we end up with that proposal. And the annual retreat has historically been the one time we all get together in person. We didn't last year, of course, and we didn't this June, but I think we will start doing that again probably next year. And that's the place where all of that happens. Once the board approves it there, because it's so important that we make sure everybody's comfortable with the changes, there's one more step, which we call ratifying. Every jur, every member then goes back and just makes sure there, there's nothing they missed, they're okay with what's there. And that's the process we're in now. So I will get you the 2021 version, which we just adopted. It won't actually click in until the 38 members have all said, yeah, we're good. It's always, they always do. I've never, it hasn't yet happened where somebody has a problem, we then have to go back and figure out how to solve. So my guess is by the end of summer, it'll be official. But that's, I'll get you that because that's the one that's, that will certainly basically functionally affect now and that would be the one that's in effect from you guys if you do your resolution.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's why I was curious is I just wanted to know if we'd be, if, if we join, we'd be joining under a slightly revised policy. So it's unlikely we wouldn't.
I will get that to you so you can see it. It's, it is again, it's pretty similar. There are a few changes, but nothing is dramatic. And it required 38 members to agree to them, so you, you can sort of assume out of the gate that there's no big changes.
Well, so a couple of things. First of all, I really appreciate the approach of this, the, the impact of a coalition as unified voice is significant. And as a, on the smaller-ish side of municipalities, I think this is an opportunity for Wheat Ridge to really elevate its participation in these type of conversations. And it really, looking through the policy statement, I especially appreciate that it's very outcomes oriented, which makes sense given the, the mission of the organization. Would you mind speaking kind of to the difference? I, I guess when I read through this, I find this very exciting and I'm very bullish about joining this, but I want to understand a little bit better. So you come up with this policy statement. What then, like what do you do with the policy statement? Can you speak to kind of advocacy versus lobbying?
Yeah, certainly. So the policy statement is just literally a, a list of the policy positions the organization holds. And it doesn't, that, that doesn't drive how we prioritize things. That's just, we now know if issue X comes up, this is the position we take on that issue. Then separately, we prioritize and we do that, it's fairly stable, but, and we, but we do that once a year, we update that and sometimes it is a bigger change. The one thing we did funky this year, partly because of the pandemic and partly because we've now been around about six years and hadn't done this since the beginning, we broke the retreat in two. We have a second part of the retreat in the fall. It'll be in late October. And that, that retreat, normally we'd do this all at the same retreat, but that retreat will be where we set the priorities, in this case, actually going out for the next five years or so. And we just haven't done that since we started, so it's, feels like a good time to do that. So that's an example of where now we'll pause, we've got the policy statement, so we know our positions, but now it's okay, what, what are the biggest priorities? Where are the biggest opportunities? What are the things that are the biggest barriers that our members are facing on their ability to do things locally? What's happening to the legislature? What's the governor, like all of those things? And then from there, we have a big energetic conversation and figure out, all right, here are the four or five things we're going to focus on over the next year or so. And then we revisit that every year and then usually it's a small adjustments, but if there's a reason to make a bigger one, we can. I mention all that because I know your intent is joining in next year, but we, I've mentioned, if you wanted to be part of that process this year, the priority setting, and you passed the resolution before that, even though your sort of membership will, will bring you, if you want, if you were going to become a member and you do the resolution, even though you're, we won't bill you for dues until January for next year, we can still bring you in as a member so you can participate in that retreat at the end of October. So I, I don't say that to rush you, so don't feel like, like take your time. But if you reach that decision by then, we'll fold you in, so then you're a part of that. But if not, then we do that every year, you'll be part of the conversation about how we set priorities. And then the policy committee is the entity that's doing that, like they're governing the, we're going to focus on, on air quality control commission rule makings because they have seven lined up over the next three years that are, each one immensely consequential. And then that legislative committee during the session takes all that and goes one more level of granularity on individual bills. And that group then, as bills come up, we figure out what position we're going to take, that's the group that decides if we support or oppose or have a more nuanced position supported or denied. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you. And that reminded me, I wanted to actually thank you of all of your really good, specific examples. I think it really helps demonstrate the type of work your organization's doing. And as you're talking about those, it really helps me understand how they're impacting our community and our region. So, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Weaver.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. So if you said there was a representative and that representative could either be city or an elected official, does it need to be the same person for a year? So, so it could be one person that goes to the October retreat and then another that participates and, okay.
Yeah, and just one little clarification that October retreat is sort of technically it's a board retreat. So whoever your board rep is, who attends the board meetings during the year, which are every other month, that's the person who sort of conceptually, that's the person you want to send to that retreat. You can send more people, you can have alternate board members. So it's, it's not like you're stuck with a single person.
Okay.
But that's a board, that's the board retreat, so sort of conceptually, that's, you'd send the board member to that. But all those other committees, lots of our members have a bunch of different people that have different, play different roles in different committees precisely because they have a bunch of staff and electives that want to be engaged so they can plug them in multiple ways. Totally up to you.
Sure, sure. Okay. And, and this is a question more for the city. Has there been thought on how you all would want to participate in this, whether it's an elected official or whether it would be something that?
Kayla, you want to speak to that?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm happy to be the Wheat Ridge representative, but I wanted to leave that up to council if, you know, an elected official wanted to take that on. But I'm happy to support or step in, you know, as the year goes on through the different board meetings.
Sure. But you have the capacity to, to do, to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That, those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a lot of information, okay? I'm looking at the policy, saying it's like support or prioritize, ensure, things like that. I understand about the plastic bags and also the styrofoam. What other successes have you participated in that is going on?
Yeah, thank you for that. And I, I was in the interest of not making my presentation another 20 minutes longer. I didn't go through.
You could make it short.
A bunch of, but there, there were about, well, it depends on how you count, but something like 40 bills that have a very direct impact on carbon pollution or on community resilience that passed this session that we were involved in. And that varied from a little to a lot. An example would be a bill that we ran that passed, which creates a grant fund for local governments to do hazard mitigation work, natural hazard mitigation work. There is enormous need to do fuels mitigation, to do revegetation, all of those kinds of things to protect local communities from the impacts of climate change, and this creates funding for that. We were, the transportation funding bill, $5.4 billion going to transportation over the next 10 years or so. And a bunch of that money's going to go to projects in local communities. It'll be distributed through the normal, like through Dr. Cog, the normal NGO process and the CDO process and all of those things. I mentioned the, our, the regional transmission organization bill. Another bill that's hugely consequential for the grid and for individuals is a bill that changes what has long been known, it's wonky but really important, called the 120% rule, which basically Excel has limited the amount of solar you've been putting on the roof, basically tied to how much solar you have been using in the past. And the problem is maybe you're planning to buy electric vehicles here and now your use is going to go up, but that Excel would not let you buy enough capacity to do that. Or maybe you're going to buy batteries and so you want the capacity higher so you can, you can build up a bunch of storage in your batteries. You couldn't really do that. This bill changes that to 200% basically in the past history. So it will allow a bunch of people who want to put solar to put a full-size system rather than a partial system. So those are just a few examples. I'm happy to talk more and a slide deck lists a bunch and I'm happy to, to talk your ear off about other things that have happened.
That's, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen, and then Ms., I tell you what, we haven't heard from Ms. Nosler Beck, so let's, oh, okay. Well, then Ms. Hulteen and then Ms. Nosler back.
Well, I was actually going to ask for a consensus. Did you have more questions, Ms. Nosler Beck? Oh, okay. Well, then I would like to ask for a consensus that Wheat Ridge join the, I'm sorry, I'm looking up, too many papers here, that Wheat Ridge join the Colorado Communities for Climate Action and move forward with a resolution adopting the appropriately ratified policy statement. Consensus?
So. Sure.
I just wanted to also say that with Wheat Ridge recently winning the All-America City Award, part of that application and why we won was because of the great work that we're doing here in Wheat Ridge. And I think what us doing with joining CC4CA is it gives us an opportunity, because some of those bigger jurisdictions, municipalities aren't at the table, to really elevate a lot of the work that we're doing here and have a voice at the table. And, and once again, just keep Wheat Ridge leading on this. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Kayla. Thanks for bringing this forward and I'm really excited about it.
I was going to close my consensus also with the same gratitude for Kayla and her Sustainability Committee. And it's just always exciting to hear how far along they are with implementing their, their recommendations. So this is an exciting step forward. So thank you, everyone.
Okay. It looked like we did have consensus to move forward. Okay. Mr. Smith, thank you very much. Kayla, thank you for bringing this forward.
Certainly. Thank you all for the invitation and look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Okay, that will conclude item number two. We will go to our action item number three. This is a discussion of HR 2307, Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021. And I'll go to Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Invite Kayla Betzel up again, and this was the item that our Speaker, Mr. Robison, spoke about earlier.
Ms. Betzel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just one moment here while I pull up our next presentation. So again, my name is Kayla Betzel, Sustainability Coordinator. I'm here tonight to bring forward some information about HR, House of Representatives, HR, Bill 2307, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021. This bill is intended to encourage market-driven innovation of clean energy technologies through a carbon fee on producers of fossil fuels. The bill would distribute the fees collected as monthly dividends to U.S. residents to offset the cost increases associated with the fee on carbon. Tonight, staff is asking council for consensus to return with a resolution in support of HR 2307. So as you may remember, like Rob stated in the public's right to speak, a group of five Wheat Ridge residents, including a sixth grader and a high school student, spoke at the public's right to speak at the August 10th, 2020 city council meeting about climate change and its effects on Colorado's environment, water supply and wildfire season, as well as the health impacts of climate change. During this group's public comments, they asked council to pass a resolution in support of HR 2307, which was at the time HR 763. During the city council report, council asked staff to return to a study session to provide more information on this bill. The new Congress began in January and on April 1st, 2021, the bill was reintroduced as HR 2307, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021. The bill was referred to the Committee on Ways and Means, the Committee on Energy and Commerce, and the Committee on Foreign Affairs. I don't have an update now as to when it will move out of these committees, but these committees are currently studying the bill in the House of Representatives. HR 2307 is a bill that puts a fee on the producers of fossil fuels that starts at $15 per metric ton of CO2 and increases by $10 per metric ton each year. This is a fee on fuels like coal, oil and natural gas that would be charged to the O-. oil and gas companies at the point of extraction. For reference, one ton of CO2 emissions is equal to about seven tanks of gasoline. By putting a fee on the source of greenhouse gas emissions, the bill's goal is to reduce emissions and drive economic investment into cleaner energy options. Because the cost to the oil and gas companies for fossil fuel extraction increases, the cost of fossil fuels increase for the consumer in commodities like gasoline and electricity. Because the price of fossil fuels and related commodities will rise, people and businesses will be encouraged to find more efficient ways to use energy. To compensate for the increased price of fossil fuels, the fees collected are deposited into a carbon dividend trust fund and used for monthly payments to U.S. citizens or lawful residents, resulting in a revenue-neutral system. Equal shares are allocated to every adult with a social security number or individual taxpayer ID, with half shares allocated for each child under 19 years old. The dividend will be distributed similar to how tax refund checks are distributed by the IRS and how the COVID-19 relief checks were distributed. It is estimated that the dividend payment initially would be approximately $20 per month per adult and $10 per month per child, and would increase each year as the carbon fees increase. It is projected that overall about 65% of families and individuals will receive more money through the monthly dividend checks than they're paying in the increased costs. Also, it is projected that lower-income families will benefit the most from a carbon fee and dividend system, making this an equitable option. Lower-income families typically have a smaller carbon footprint, and since the dividend checks are distributed evenly, it is projected that low-income families will come out ahead 95% of the time because overall, they consume far less energy than the wealthy. The bill is also projected to create 2.1 million new jobs. The largest industries that see projected job growth are healthcare and social assistance along with retail, as these are the industries strongly affected by consumer spending, which would increase with the monthly dividend checks. If passed, this bill is projected to reduce carbon emissions by 45% by 2030 with a net-zero target by 2050. So how will this affect Wheat Ridge, a family or residents living in Wheat Ridge? Using data from Xcel Energy and the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, I found the average monthly usage and price for gasoline, electricity, and natural gas for a Colorado family. This cost is shown in blue on the graph, on the bar graph. And the orange on the graph represents the addition in monthly cost for these commodities in the first year of the carbon fee and dividend program. So in total, if you add up the three orange, the orange, three orange pieces of this bar graph, and I also put the number at the bottom there, the, the total increased monthly cost for electricity, gasoline, and natural gas equals $18.42 projected. The carbon dividend for a family of four would begin at $60 per month for two adults and two children in the home. So the family would have, on average, $40 extra per month. This extra money would also help to cover the, the increase in costs in, in commodities that are fossil fuel-heavy, like airline tickets. So the price of airline tickets is also expected to increase by 1.1%, which would be an increase of about $4 per ticket with current airline prices. Currently, HR 2307 has 77 cosponsors in the House of Representatives from 27 states, including three Colorado representatives. 12 Colorado cities and counties have passed resolutions in support of a carbon fee and dividend, and Wheat Ridge would be the second after Manitou Springs to specifically endorse HR 2307 if the resolution passes. Many other Colorado businesses, organizations, and individuals have endorsed the bill as well. And over 3,500 U.S. economists support carbon pricing because it is considered an efficient climate policy option, meaning that it achieves emissions reductions at the lowest possible cost. The resolution supports the Wheat Ridge Sustainability Action Plan, Goal 1 BI, in the renewable energy topic area, which is endorse a market solution to carbon dioxide pollution with a federal tax on carbon production or a carbon fee slash dividend. By passing a resolution in support of this bill, Wheat Ridge would add their name to a long list of endorsements in Colorado and show support for this type of system on a federal level. So thank you for having me tonight to present. And as a reminder, the next step would be a consensus to return with a resolution in support of HR 2307. As a reminder, there is no financial obligation associated with this resolution, and I am available now to hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Noslerbeck.
Thanks, Kayla, so much. Just looking at how this all works and who's going to be most impacted in terms of, you know, who's going to be paying for this upfront, I'm wondering if it might be possible to have the Race and Equity Task Force take a look at this before we make a final decision on it? Because even though I completely understand how the dividend would work, for people who are working to make ends meet, a lot of times, it's the price at the pump that hurts the worst. And I don't, I don't come from the space where I can speak to that. And I think that we have members on the, on the task force that could probably take a look at this. But also, I think we need to, like Mary Ann, I don't know if that's something that the Race and Equity Task Force can take on right now. So, just a, just a thought.
That's a great idea. I'd be happy to ask them, to ask Mary Ann and the task force.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you, Ms. Noslerbeck, because I think that's a fantastic idea. I think getting that input would be really helpful. This is a pretty complicated piece of legislation, and there's a lot of nuances to it. And I think it has such significant economic impact. I would really appreciate that perspective as well before, before weighing in. So I would definitely support that suggestion.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. I really appreciate some of the comments as far as like the local impact, because I think that that is what we were elected to primarily uphold, is how these, this legislation would affect our constituents directly in, in the city of Wheat Ridge. And I can say, you know, as a single mom who even works really close to my home, having to fill up my gas tank recently has been outrageous. And I think, you know, for, for families that are trying to make ends meet, it's, it's really challenging. And even though it seems like it would be a neutral effect, I think it's, that cost would inevitably be passed on to the consumer at, at the pumps. And we're already seeing really high gas prices. So at this point in time, without the diversity and equity group weighing in on it and taking into consideration gas prices currently, I wouldn't support this resolution at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Weaver.
Kayla, I was just curious if you knew how it would affect small businesses in Wheat Ridge, because we have a lot of like landscaping-based businesses. I think about my business, obviously, I'm using a lot more, I'm creating a bigger carbon footprint than the average because of the business I have. Could you talk to that a little bit and just how it would affect a small business owner and family who might live in Wheat Ridge?
Right. Thank you for the question. Similarly to what Councilmember Dozeman said, much of the cost in this bill would be passed on to consumers and, you know, from a business. But one of the reasons that the tax does start low and incrementally rise each year is to really give businesses the opportunity to transition to sustainable energy and really plan for the future. There is also a part in the bill that suggests that businesses that utilize fossil fuels in their equipment or their processing would be eligible for low-interest financing to replace the fuel source on the equipment or whatever process that, that they would need to, you know, a cleaner energy source, maybe electricity or something like that. But inevitably, the cost would likely be passed on to the consumers in that scenario.
Did you have a follow-up? Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So, so, and this might be later on, but I'm, I'm just thinking about, like in what I do and in landscaping, oftentimes, the technology has not actually come up to speed, just to give an example, like a, like a weed whacker. While there are electric weed whackers, they're actually not as powerful as, as things that need to deal with things like live in my backyard. And, and so I was just kind of curious if, if the bill deals with, right, there's a, there's a scale issue and a jump in technology, and I just, I know that I can read more about it as well, but I was just kind of curious if...
Yeah, no, that's a great point. And I think that, you know, the, the, really the fee, and again, the incremental fee, the idea of it is that, you know, businesses and technology will kind of match up to that because we're creating an atmosphere on the federal level where carbon is taxed at a certain rate. Everyone understands, you know, in year two, year three, where that tax will go. And so, so the idea is that it will incentivize, incentivize industry to, you know, kind of catch up where it might be lagging behind right now.
Thank you, Ms. Noslerbeck.
I just wanted to kind of speak to what you were talking about, Councilmember Weaver. I think with Kayla, what you've brought us this evening, the, our last presentation speaks to how we're going to be seeking out larger solutions. I think one of my hesitations with joining onto this right now is that we aren't, there aren't other solutions out there. So someone can't really make the choice to drive an electric vehicle because they can't afford one. And so when, when the grid is up to speed and when hydrogen is an option, that is an affordable option, that's when, that's when people have a choice to make for, in my opinion, when it comes to signing on to supporting this resolution. And so that's, I think we're on the right track. I think we're doing both things. And I just, I want us to keep our, as a council, our eye on the prize, that that's, that's why we're joining this larger organization, have a voice, to say we need options and choice.
So, thanks. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would be comfortable waiting as well, certainly to at least have the Equity and Diversity Task Force to kind of weigh in on this. But definitely, there's some things in here that I think we're all a little uncomfortable with. So can I make a consensus that we have the Equity Task Force look at this and bring it back again at another time?
I believe we could ask for consensus on that. Let's see a show of hands.
I, I don't think so. Whenever staff...
I think if we can just sort of ask if they could, can fit this into their, into their work program and, and sometime in a reasonable time...
I support that consensus, but I have a question. I may have missed this, but is, what is the timing in terms of how this is moving forward? I mean, is there, is it just kind of out there?
It's been, you know, it's, it's in, it's been introduced in the House, and it needs to go to the committee, and then it needs to get out of the House and go to the Senate. So it's got a...
It's got some time.
It has a ways, it has a ways to go.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, yeah, so I definitely support that, especially considering we may be looking at something different at that point, too. So...
Okay. And then as it, as it moves through the process, I'm sure there'll be more, more press and more information about it coming out. Okay. So, thank you very much, Kayla.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that'll conclude our agenda item number three. We'll go back to the, we'll go to our staff reports and start with our city manager, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. It is Sustainability Night, and if you seen in your manager's update I sent out over this weekend, the city does have its first all-electric vehicle. So we're excited about that. It's a staff vehicle mainly for our community development planners who have to go out into the community, and, and we have two charging stations up and running, so they're not officially signed yet, but people have been starting to use them. So they're free until the end of the year. I think we're going to come back next year with a recommendation on, on how much they'll, they'll cost to actually use. But we're just, they're getting used. I've seen some cars plugged into them, so. And then today, I toured the Porchlight Family Justice Center. I know, I know, not sure if anybody on council, Rachel did, and they met with the executive director, and she's offered tours for anybody that would like to, to see the place. It's amazing. It's, it's worth it. I was, I was really, really pleased. It's, it's sad we need something like that, but if you remember, it's a place where all these wraparound services are consolidated into one area. So families or individuals who are going through any type of domestic violence or any other issue can be, be helped. And they are going to be asking for, all the cities in Jefferson County, for annual contribution for their operation expense. And if you remember, I think we gave, I can't remember now, 18,000 maybe for, to help set up the organization. Our share, based on our population, for next year will be 21,000. We are going to go ahead and put that in the budget, and you guys can consider that at your budget retreat. Yes, Ms. Weaver? And that, no, that's not an outside agency. So this would be very similar to the contributions we make to the victim, the VOA for victim outreach, and it'd be in our police department budget. But their, their funding model, what they're working on, which they hope will be sustainable over time, is 40% of their funding will come from government as, such as ourselves in the county, 40% from corporate grants, and 20% from individual contributions. So I think 21,000 is, is a, is a pretty good deal for us. It actually, it'll save us money for the amount of work that can be diverted away from our police activities into a proper center. So if anybody's interested in a tour, let me know, and we can get that arranged. It's, it's a great, great place.
Okay. Thank you for that rather brief update. Any other, let's see, we'll go to elected officials matters, any reports we have, Ms. Noslerbeck, and then we'll go to Mr. Stites.
I've, I've talked to a couple other council members about this, and I've also talked to Patrick. But I wanted to see if I could get a consensus this evening to see if we can explore some options for our boards and commissions participants and volunteers to have some type of incentive for participating in our boards and commissions. One of the suggestions I have talked to Patrick about was seeing if it's possible to explore providing the same Parks and Recreation benefits that we receive here as council members or as staff for people who serve on our, on our boards and commissions. I think it, it provides a lot. It could be used as a recruitment tool, a retention tool, as well as we can also have our, our members, our, our people who are serving on boards and commissions see and experience all of their work and efforts by, by participating in Parks and Recreation Services. So I just would like to see if, I think I'm asking for a consensus for us to ask Patrick to please explore that.
So is that consensus to sort of bring back a report on, on what impact that might have, or just to bring back a...
Yeah, I've already spoken with Karen, our Parks and Rec Director, and she thinks it's a great idea, and it's, it's really something we can just implement. We can, we can bring back maybe specifics if you'd like. I think we probably should look at maybe some type of tiered structure. I think our idea is if people who are on an official board and commission who, you know, on, they have a three-year or five-year term, they, they get maybe a full individual membership to the rec center, as you all do. And then there's some ad hoc committees, maybe you're not meeting as quite as much, maybe they get a, they get a 10 punch pass or something, something like that, maybe a little bit of tiered. So it's, it's, and, and yeah, there's no, we don't feel there's any impact to the operations. We don't feel it'll have any impact on operations, and I think it's a great idea.
And I, I think also bringing it back and kind of describing what all of those various, like what you get, could be really helpful in that recruitment component. And, and this also helps with, you know, I know for a lot of families, for people who are working, it, it really helps from that accessibility and equity. are working, it, it really helps from that accessibility and equity standpoint as well, but you're, you're investing your time, and you're also, you're also getting more than just the public service out of it, you're getting that, that time. So it's a good gauge of valuing your time. So, thank you.
Well, and think of the health benefits that you're, that you're getting out of it also.
And it's healthy. And I also just had one more thing to say, because I think my kids did tune in on YouTube, but it's my daughter Coco's birthday. She turned five today, and she got a new bedroom set up with a desk, so she's really excited for kindergarten at Wilmer Davis this year. So happy birthday, Coco!
Happy birthday, Coco! All right. Mr. Stites.
Just a quick, District III has an opening for our cultural commission seat, so along those lines, we need to fill that. So recruit, recruit!
Okay. Additional reports? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. I just want to second Patrick's offer. If you haven't toured Porchlight, I really highly recommend it. I was, especially moved they actually have onsite services for their pets, and that just really touched me, like, just the integration and comprehensive approach to, you know, people, and it's just amazing. So speaking of pets, I'm going to bring up one of my favorite topics, which is dogs off-leash. It has become a significant problem. There's been a couple of actually tragic incidents in the last couple of weeks. I will speak to my own experience that I'm really restricted on walking my own dogs in my own neighborhood, because there are so many dogs off-leash, that we literally, like, we'll get halfway down a block and have to turn around. I have a dog that doesn't like other dogs, so that's kind of my issue, but it's really noticeably been an issue. So if that's something that you could pass along to Chief Martha, I know that there's a lot of community members impacted by that. And then secondly, I guess it's my kvetch, it's my kvetching day. I received a notification from a constituent who was complaining about the construction traffic at Clear Creek crossing, parking in the bike lanes. And, and then a second one, literally like less than 15 minutes later from another constituent with concerns about parking in the bike lanes on Pier Street. So dogs off-leash and parking in bike lanes are my two, two concerns.
Can you clarify? You said Clear Creek cross, Clear Creek crossing, construction traffic?
Yeah.
But then, and parking in the bike lanes?
Yeah, so the construction traffic, the trucks are parking in the bike lanes.
Out at Clear Creek Crossing?
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to think, what bike lanes? On the Clear Creek Drive?
No, no, yeah, on the, on the street there. Yeah.
On the actual Clear Creek Drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have some pictures. So that, that one's easy, because that's probably more clear communication and trail. But I did hear both of those. And, you know, it's hot out, but people are riding their bikes. So with that, that's all I got. Thanks.
Additional items? Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I second it about animals off-leash. I come across, my dog's always on a leash, but come across somebody, and I said, you know, your dog needs to be on a leash, it's the law. And the answer was, what? And just kept walking and just didn't do it as they were carrying a leash. So I don't know if this is the new kind of vibrant Wheat Ridge that we're getting, but it just is a reminder to me also about how people were setting off fireworks. It was set out there for a long time. They're illegal. And I also wonder if they're illegal, how come they're able to be sold around, you know? And it just makes me feel like people aren't having consideration for other people. And this isn't what I'm used to from living here for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials matters? Okay, that will just about wrap up our meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you to our guests who came and presented. We will have a full council meeting one week from tonight at 7:00. So I hope that everyone has a safe week. Remember, it's, school is out, so there's lots of children and other activities playing in our, playing in our city. So be careful, everyone. Have a, have a, have a great week. Thank you so much. We'll stand adjourned.